All right, let's, let's call this to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to Kane County's Committee of the Whole dated Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022, 2222.
Happy Tuesday.
With all those twos. Clerk, please call the roll.
Allen?
Bates here.
Furman?
Furman here.
Brown?
Brown here.
Davist?
Ford present.
Fraz? Ichbal?
Ichbal present.
Gums?
Gums here.
Kenyon?
Here.
Kiyas?
Kiyas present.
Toby? Leonard?
Lewis?
Lewis here.
Molina?
Molina present.
Sanchez?
Sanchez here.
Sheprow?
Sheprow present.
Silva?
Silva is here.
Strathman?
Strathman here.
Surgis?
Surgis has been enjoying every minute of this.
Tepe?
Tepe here.
Wallace?
You don't have pretty boy here.
Bonicki?
Bonicki present.
We do have a quorum, okay, very good. Thank you, everybody, for joining us today. This is going to be an important discussion where we're going to have to go on to next steps after this. The reason why I wanted to have this meeting is because of a special county sales tax that may be levied by referendum to support the efforts of Kane County in certain areas. And it's very important for the board to be able to hear what the areas are for potential funding so that later on, we can further our discussion and you can narrow it down and take potentially one of these suggested opportunities to the voters in November for their decision on whether or not they would want to support this. The corporate authorities of a county, and I'm reading directly from legislation from Illinois about this tax and not to interfere with the full presentation, may impose a tax upon all persons engaged in the business of selling tangible products at a retail location in the county. This tax is referred to as a special county retailer's occupation tax. The corporate authorities may submit by resolution the question to the voters of whether the county shall be allowed to impose the tax. The county clerk must certify the question, who then submits it to the voters. And if the majority of the electors voting on the proposition vote in favor of it, the county may impose the tax. Could you put up the slide, please? And I believe I have, I have to stop because I forgot to do the pledge of allegiance and approval of the minutes. So before we get to this wonderful slide.
And public comment.
And the public comments, or I jumped ahead of my agenda because I'm so excited to talk about this.
Somebody's focused.
Indeed, narrow focus. Mr. Sanchez, please do the honor.
To the flag. The flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, may I please have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of December 6th, 2021?
What move the minutes?
Monica? Absolutely.
Madam Chair.
Are there any edits to these minutes or changes? Hearing non-clerk, please call the roll.
Bates?
Aye.
Furman?
Furman here.
Brown? Davist? Ford?
Ford yes.
Fraz? Ichbal?
Ichbal, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kiyas?
Kiyas, yes.
Toby? Leonard? Lewis?
Lewis, yes.
Martin? Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Sheprow?
Sheprow, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Surgis?
Surgis, yes.
Tepe? Tepe, yes.
Wallace? Bonicki?
Bonicki, yes.
Thank you, very good. No, thank you. Is there any, that motion passes, is there any public comment? There any online? Hearing and seeing none? Let's go on to the presentation. Now, could you please pull the slide back up? There we go, thank you. So this tax, potential tax, special county wide sales tax, is implemented on quarter percentages. And it can go for, it can go up more than 0.50%. It can go up as high as the board sets and the voters approve of. But this is the rate from 0.25% and 0.50%, which means that on a hundred dollar purchase, that would be 25 cents. So on, at 0.25, for a $2 purchase, it would be a half a cent. So that's what you'd be paying in addition. With that rate, with the administration fee of 1.5%, which is mandatory, the total net possibly that would be coming into the county on an annual basis would be 13 million. At 0.50% would be 26.5 million. And that would come in perpetuity. There is no rate limit on this. So it can go up as high or as low, but no lower than 0.25% as set forth by the board. But once it is set, the board may, by ordinance, discontinue it or lower it. However, if the county board wishes to raise it, or put it back on the tax again, keep it off for a couple of years and put it back on, it has to go back to referendum again and be approved by the voters. So the voters can help us set it, the rate. We tax at that rate that was set up by the referendum. We keep it for as long as we feel we would like to have it. The board can take it down, they can lower it. But you can't re-impose it without going back out to referendum or raise the rate. So we know what, so it's very careful that we have to, we go forward on this, that we set a reasonable projection of what money is needed.
Sheprow, question?
Yes, Mr. Sheprow.
Yeah, just to clarify, does that mean that if it goes to referendum and it passes, the board still must take action to decide whether to impose it at all?
Yes, because we have to submit the proper paperwork to the state.
Okay, but I mean, it's not like some referendum where it's, shall it be established? And if it passes, it is established? All this would do would entitle the board to then decide whether to impose it and at what rate? Not to exceed what was?
The rate's already been decided by referendum.
At the maximum rate?
Correct, whatever, well, the rate that we set. So you can set it at quarter percent, 50%, 75%.
I'm just having trouble understanding. So if it's 25.25% and it passes, can the board decide it's only going to do 0.15%? Or must it do the quarter percent?
Quarter percent.
Okay, I, well, I'll wait to hear more. I think I'm still confused about what the board's role is once the referendum were to pass, if it did.
The board simply has to submit the paperwork.
Okay, well, I mean, that's a ministerial task. I mean, there's no.
It's a minister, that's it. It's done, it's done.
Okay.
It's been approved, their expectations by the electorate that it's going to be funded, and we do the paperwork.
Bates, please?
Yes, Ms. Bates.
So we can lower it without permission of the electorate, correct? We just can't raise it without?
Only by quarter percentage points.
We can lower it without their permission?
If it's at 0.50, you can lower it to 0.25, but not any lower than that.
Okay.
Or you can dismiss it. Think quarters.
So if it were 0.25, you could reduce it to zero?
Then, then, then the tax is gone.
I'm not saying you would, I just, I guess, I think we're both trying to understand what the board can do after the referendum, or what it must do.
So if you find that you're getting too much money at 0.50, and five years go down the line, and you no longer need to tax the electorate by that amount of money, you can reduce it by 0.25. But once you do that, you cannot raise it.
Always in increments of 0.25.
That's accurate.
And once you lower it, you can't raise it again without a new referendum?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ichbal, Mr. Ichbal, I'm sure, Mr. Ichbal, you have a question?
Yes, I have a, is this an advisory referendum that you are proposing?
No, it's binding.
Okay, mandatory?
Binding, yes, once we put it out there. Yes.
So the board has to vote on it before?
Yes, we would have to get your approval to put it up there.
The vote, the board would have to vote, Sheprow, to put it on the ballot. And then if it passes, as I understand the explanation, the board, then if it's a quarter percent, it just files paperwork with the state. If it's half a percent, it files paperwork with the state. But at a subsequent date, the board could elect to lower it to 25.25 or to discontinue it altogether, but only in those quarter percent increments.
Correct.
Correct, that's correct.
Again, Madam Chair, I have a question on it. What's the need for this one? Why do we are, why are we thinking about it?
That, that's what the discussion is going to show in just a little bit, once we get through this initial introduction. There'll be four presentations for you. And the need is going to be clearly delineated. Okay, so may, now, may I, I'd like to continue. If, are there any other questions? There'll be more questions, I'm sure, that we'll all be asking. Now, this tax has restricted funding boundaries, very restricted funding boundaries. And once implemented, if implemented, the only purpose that this tax is going to be used for is one of the following. And that's, we're going to be talking about this presentation. So it'll be on mental health, public safety, transportation, or the county buildings. That is the only thing that that tax could be used for. So it's segmented for that special fund. Now, I've asked four presenters to come up today. Jamie Mawser will be presenting on public safety with Vince Coyle. Monica Silva and Michael Isaacson will be presenting on mental health. Tom Rickert will be presenting on transportation, and of course Drew Fraz has been assisting with that. And Chris Kiyas will be presenting with Mark Smith on the county buildings. Now, the questions that I've asked all four, just so that there's some structure to all of this, are the following. Describe your committees, or your departments, or your elected offices' needs for the current and future funding that this special tax may present. What is the projected cost to remedy current needs? How would the sustained revenue from a special county retailer's occupation tax be able to support, satisfy, and/or resolve future funding needs? And how will your request provide sustained value to Kane County's residents? So those are the four questions I've asked. And without any further questions, I'd like to bring up right now Vince Coyle. And he will give some additional background on this, this tax. And then Vince, will you also be presenting a little bit regarding judicial public safety?
I, I can do a little bit as what that would go to, the numbers. I don't have, the, the question you refer to, like, any kind of numbers, I don't have that information.
Okay, and is that correct? You have those? Not quite yet?
So it's a part of the presentation that?
This is Jamie Mawser.
Yes, sorry about that. It's a part of the presentation that I will have, that we're going to have a sub-presentation to this, a judicial and public safety, for the public safety aspect of it. Because there's all of our judicial partners, and we're all compiling those numbers to present to the committee.
Very good, thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair, Gums, quick question for clarity.
Yes, and everyone will have 12 minutes, no more than 12. I'll stop you at 10, give you a heads up at 10, so you can do two-minute summary. Okay, so, yes, Ms. Gums?
Just for clarity, under the parameters in which this can be used for, I, mental health, is that including the substance abuse? As I understand it, substance abuse is one of those, under, allowed under this?
That is correct. I thought that that would be best served under mental health and/or judicial public safety.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Granted, both, absolutely. Okay.
All right, good afternoon, Assistant State's Attorney Vincent Coyle. I'm just going to give a general overview of this special county retailer's occupation tax. And as Madam Chair had indicated, the county may impose the retailer's occupation tax, special county, upon all persons engaged in business of selling tangible personal property at retail in the county. I'll go into that in a little bit later of what that actually is. But also, as indicated, you would have to have the proposition for this tax submitted to the electors. And briefly, again, just to reiterate, it's, as you can see, for public safety, public facilities, mental health, substance abuse, or transportation. What is new under the statute that started January 1st of this year is that if the county does elect to use it for mental health or substance abuse, the county must establish a seven-member mental health board before it levies such tax. So that is something that is new to the statute. And the tax has to be imposed only in one-quarter percent. So the 0.25, 0.5, 0.751, you can't have any kind of variation other than the 0.25 increment. So the example that was given earlier of going from 0.25 to 0.1 or 0.15 or whatever, cannot be done. It can only be in the one-quarter percent increments. So if the county wanted to do this, the first step would be to pass a resolution or ordinance allowing this to go to the electors. The resolution or ordinance initiating the submission of the public question may specify which regular, regular election that it would go to. And then also, in the ordinance itself, it has to have the statute authorizing it. The second step, if this were to take place, is that the question that goes to electors must have specific language. That language is included in this slide that, to pay for, and I, in this, I have public safety purposes, but it would be one of the four or five that are outlined in the statute. For those purposes, shall Kane County be authorized to impose an increase of its share of local sales tax by whatever percent tax is authorized in the resolution? That is the question that would go to the electors, where they would vote yes or no. Also to note, as indicated, the county board could decide to discontinue this tax at any time after it is passed by the electors. But they also, the county may opt to do a sunset provision, which, at which they allow this tax to go for a certain time, and then after that amount of time, that, that tax would expire. Also, what is important to note is that whatever purpose that the electors are voting for, it can only be one of the outlined by the statute in terms of whether it's for public safety, public facility, mental health, substance abuse, or transportation. The electors?
Question, Sheprow?
We're going to be holding back all questions till after the presentation now, so.
Well, it'll be a moot point by then.
All right, stop the time. Yes, Mr. Sheprow?
Okay, I, I guess, Vince, are you saying that the proposition, can it specify all of those, or may it only pick one?
May only pick one, and it can only do one at a time. So if you did want to do another one, it would have to be at another election on its own, so you could.
And is the sunset provision, would that be in the proposition itself, or would that be something that the board could decide upon later?
I believe that it would be in the proposition itself, so the electors would know what the county is authorizing.
And I think I understood what you just said, but, so if we said it was going to be for mental health, it couldn't be for any of the other categories unless we had a separate referendum at a different election?
Correct, you can only pick one and use it for those purposes. That is correct. And then if you did, so for example, if you wanted to do public safety at first for this first election and that passes, and then you also wanted to include mental health, you would have to wait till the next election and do this process all over again. And then you can take tax for both purposes, once both have been passed at different elections, at different times.
And then that would be a separate levy of the quarter percent, not levy, but it would be a separate tax for the quarter percent for the second one, or whatever it would be?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good, thank you.
So just a quick timeline here, if the county were to utilize a special county retailer's occupation tax, the, if the county has a filed certified election result before May 1st, then the tax rate will go into effect at July 1st of that same year. So for example, if this were to go to the November election, and those results are certified before May 1st, then July 1st of 2023, that tax rate would take effect. And then also, if you, you can see the second point, as it relates to October 1st, if it's before October 1st, then it would start January 1st of the next year. The timeline for getting the resolutions points to note, the, the 79 days before the scheduled election, there needs to be the resolution authorized by the county board, and then not less than 68 days before the scheduled election, the county clerk shall certify the public question to be submitted. So as you have discussion and determine when you, what election, you want this question to be proposed to the electors, it's important to keep those two timelines in mind. These are some of the education materials that I, I was able to find that other counties put out there when they were trying to educate. So not everything is going to be taxed according to the statute. So any, any food that you take off premises to eat would not be taxed. So that would be your groceries, as you can see on this slide. The example here was $92, your tax would be zero on that because it's food being taken off the premises. However, if you were to have a cup of coffee and donuts at a restaurant, you could see that it would be .01 tax added to your bill for this. Same with items that are titled with the state, won't be taxed either. So in this example, it's the tractor, and then also on the next slide, I think they have a vehicle, yep. So those are items that would not be taxed according to the statute for this special county retailer's occupation tax. Also, prescriptions are not taxed under this as well. But again, as I indicated, a restaurant dinner, if you eat in, in the restaurant, would be taxed, as well as any other tangible personal property that doesn't fit some of those things that I said would not be taxed. So this was just a, kind of an idea of some of the items that would or would not be taxed according to the statute for this. And then I had given a presentation earlier last year, and I included this slide, and it kind of gives you a perspective of the counties, of how they're utilizing this tax. So this information was gathered, I believe, from the Illinois Department of Revenue. Again, it was based on my presentation last year, so I don't know what the update is. But to the point that was earlier made about the different types of tax being utilized, if you were to look at the McDonough County, they have 0.5 for public safety and then 0.25 for transportation. So in that circumstance, they had two different referendums at two different elections. Something to note, though, is that every county that is utilizing this tax, that I was able to find, is utilizing it for public safety. And then there's some counties that use it for, in addition to other things, such as public facility, transportation, and mental health. Also, my slide from last year, I looked at the Illinois Department of Revenue, and it was just different counties totals that you see on the right of how much they are making based on their rate. So that gives you kind of a little perspective of how many counties are actually using it and what they're using it for. That's pretty much the overview of the, of the tax itself. What I will note for public safety is that if you were to submit the question to the electors for public safety, that would need to go to crime prevention, detention, firefighting, police, medical, ambulance, and emergency services. So those are the, the umbrella of public services that that tax could be used for if that was selected. Based on that, is there any questions?
Madam Chair, Bonicki?
Yes, Mr. Sanchez first, please.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Vince, you mentioned, mentioned crime prevention. Is that just normal police work, or what is that specifically?
I think it would fall under anything that would be crime prevention. You know, the state's attorney's office has different programs right now that is trying to deter crime, and I, I would argue that that would fall under that umbrella. It does have a specific thing for police, so the umbrella of crime prevention, I think, is bigger than just police or the sheriff in this circumstance. So it can go to many different things, as long as it goes to crime prevention.
Okay, um, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Renick, you're next.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Did you say, I might have missed it, that vehicles are not included? They would not be taxed?
Vehicles are not taxed.
That is correct. Anything that is titled with the Secretary of State would not be considered part of this tax.
How about, like, real estate, things like that, the, the bigger items?
No, it's just tangible personal property, so any real estate would not be taxed as well. It's just tangible, personable, personal property.
Personal, okay.
If you go out and buy a handbag, that would be taxed.
Okay. Thank you.
Bates, please?
Hold on, Dr. Silva.
Substance abuse strictly under mental health?
Are they, do they go together, or, or what's a?
Yes, would substance abuse be strictly under mental health, then?
Um, I don't know if it would go strictly under mental health, but I, I would look at them together.
Wasn't it a separate category?
It is a separate category.
It is a separate category, indeed. But I, I took the liberty of assuming that judicial public safety, since sometimes still selling illegal substances is considered a crime, taking certain drugs is still considered a crime, that our state's attorney is working on programs that are supporting the reduction of that crime and rehabilitation. So I took that liberty, and then also thinking mental health, if that went through, that would help solve the. that would help solve the reasons why someone is addicted or taking illegal substance.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for pointing that out, because I do think that part of the problem with our process has been that it's been strictly a legal issue and not a mental health issue.
It's both, yeah. Ms. Bates, I believe you had a question.
Yes, three, if you don't mind. It said resident, it said non-residential tax, not, non-county residents buy tax and they're taxed. What about residents buying tax? Do they pay the tax?
It would be any, anyone in the county that would buy personal property.
Okay, because the slide said non-resident, okay. Do we have to designate the use in the referendum ahead of time? Do we have to say this is for mental health? Okay, yes, okay. And can we go up only one increment of .25% in each referendum?
No, so if you wanted to start it out at .5, you could do that. You don't have to first go to .25 and then go to .5. You could, in your referendum, just go .5.
And then, and then the following, or else we could go up another .5?
If you wanted to pass another referendum after that, you, you could. It just needs to be in increments of .25.
Didn't you say, Vince, that there was no upward limit on the rate?
Yeah, you can, if you want to increase it after a referendum has been passed, you would have to do another referendum to whatever.
I mean, you could do it at 4%.
You could, I don't.
I mean, I'm not saying it would pass, but I mean, the point being, it's not like you have to start at a quarter percent and move up. You pick your number.
Correct, you pick your number, but it just needs to be in increments of .25.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Ekbo, your hand is up. Is it, is that just from before? And Ms. Bates? I'll take your hands down, thank you.
Alan, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Alan?
Thank you. Vince, could you go over those categories again for public safety? I didn't see a slide that spelled those out.
Sure. So the, the different things that encompasses public safety are crime prevention, detention, firefighting, police, medical, ambulance, or other emergency services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Serge's?
Yes, Mr. Serge's.
When Vince reads off those categories, is there anything within the categories that it's limited to? Or does it just go into what I'll call their general?
Operations?
Operations, that's a great way to say it, thank you so much.
That will be determined by their budgeting. So they know how much money they can allocate to those different initiatives. Unlike the next one that we're going to be talking about, which is much more specified on the allocation of the money, and that'll be on mental health. So each one has a slight nuance of requirements.
Madam Chair, thank you.
Question, short comment, Sheprow?
Yes, Mr. Sheprow.
I think this might be what Cliff was also asking, but if not, I'm asking it. I mean, within those categories, for example, crime prevention, one could make a very plausible argument that combating substance abuse helps in crime prevention. And it would seem that a lot of those categories, you could argue that the specific category would also fit within another of the specified categories. And for example, firefighters or police need to be trained in mental health activities because they're often the first people that encounter someone disturbed as part of a call. Would seem to me that that would be a legitimate category or a legitimate item to use for your crime prevention, but that wouldn't seem to trigger the requirement that you set up a 708 board for that purpose.
Not at all, not at all. And I would like to have State's Attorney Moser speak to that. And I know she is looking forward to doing a very thorough presentation at the next judicial public safety meeting.
Thank you. I believe the presentation is coming up now. So one of the things that I wanted to discuss specifically is the Safety Act that was passed. Because a lot of what was put into the Safety Act was criminal justice reform. Because the idea of the way we have been prosecuting cases has, as been mentioned before, strictly been punishment. And it hasn't really been a focus on the rehabilitation in the way that it should have been. So that was the genesis behind the Safety Act, which was signed into law on January 22nd of 2021. And it stands for Safety, Accountability, Fairness, and Equity Today. And it is a sweeping legislation that I believe ended up being 749 pages, has been modified already with two trailer bills, and there's a third trailer bill that's coming out. This in particular was going to affect all of the areas of our criminal justice system, including all of the people who are part of judicial and public safety. And that's why the group of us needs to be able to come together to talk about how this particular bill will affect each of our departments, so that we can talk about how public safety in the retailers occupation tax can actually assist with a lot of the areas that we're looking at. So starting off with, there are certain areas, and there's many more besides this, but this is just the beginning portion of it. These are things that the Safety Act is starting to require for all of us to do in judicial and public safety. And I'm going to go more into specifics with each of these. So starting with body cameras. All police departments throughout the state of Illinois are going to be required to have body cameras at least by 2025. It's all dependent on population. Our Sheriff's Department has already undertaken that process, and they have body cameras. But in addition to that, besides the purchasing of body cameras for who they have now or who they may get in the future, there's also storage that we have. And that's a big thing that we've been working on with our IT department, because the sheriff has to store all of the body camera footage. And there are specific requirements in there as to what has to be kept, how long it has to be kept, and how things are actually marked. And if they don't do this, it's a potential class three felony that they're charged with. So there is a lot of things that we are going to have to be cognizant of to make sure that we are doing it the way that the law requires us. That storage, though, is not only going to be for the Sheriff's Department, but it's also going to be for the state's attorney's office and all of those other police departments. Because Aurora and Elgin will have to send it, items to us just as much as the Sheriff's Office will. The public defender, when they get discovery from us, they are going to have to store it somewhere. We'll have to have conversion programs and editing programs, because when we bring this in front of a judge or a jury for a trial, we can't necessarily play everything that's in there, because there may be non-relevant items. But then what you're looking at is you have a big video, then you're going to have an altered portion of that video. And that's, again, more storage that we're holding all of this. The public defender's office has the right to edit those recordings themselves, because they may have a way that they're going to present it. So we're going to see a lot of duplication in this, but the amount of storage that we have is going to increase exponentially. In addition to that, with body cameras, it is inevitably just going to take a longer time to review cases. The other day, I was joking with somebody about us having done five order protection hearings and two trials in an afternoon. And now we can barely get one trial done. And part of that is because of technology and because of the body cameras. Our review of cases alone, we read a police report, we're listening to a 911 recording, we're listening to squad videos and watching that, and now we're doing the same with body cameras. And if you have multiple police officers who are showing up on a scene, that's hours upon hours of what we have to do. And this is going to affect my office as well as the public defender's office. And then, as I alluded to before, it is going to make it so that we have longer hearings and trials, because we have to present this, because it is evidence. And especially when we have juries who watch Law and Order SVU and CSI and just believe that we have all this technology. When we don't bring forth something, then they question why we did it. So this is going to affect the state's attorney's office, the public defender, and all of the judiciary, which would include the clerk's office, who will have people there, security, bailiffs, the judges, and then anyone else that is needed for the safety of a courtroom. So again, this alone is affecting multiple areas of our judicial and public safety system. Part of the Safety Act also requires deflection programs. I am over the moon in regards to this. And as Mr. Sheprow had asked earlier, deflection programs can include mental health services and addiction services, because the idea behind the deflection programs is to get people out and away from the criminal justice system. Now, this is a mandate now that the Sheriff's Department, police officers, and state's attorney's offices have to undertake. And here in King County, we are leading by example, because we have brought in our very own pre-arrest diversion program. Thankfully, we've been able to do this with grants that we have been given because of both state grants as well as federal grants. And the idea behind this is that people, when they come upon a police officer because a crime is being committed because of mental health reasons, addiction or substance use disorder, or because of a simple lack of resources such as poverty, homelessness, food scarcity, instead of arresting that person, we are going to be able to refer them to one of our case managers who is working within our community to help get them resources. So we're not putting them in jail, we're not transporting them to the court system, we're not spending hours upon hours to eventually get to a resolution that gives people help. But this is going to take more people in our system to be able to help so that we can refer them to programming where they can get mental health help and they can get housing. But again, as a part of the Safety Act, this is now mandated. And while this is one of the provisions that does have some funding that is granted for it, it's a process to go through it. And now is when we're supposed to be starting that. In addition to that, there is a lot of new mandates for training for law enforcement. This is going to affect the sheriff, all police departments, and the state's attorney's office, because we employ investigators. Those investigators are considered sworn officers, and those officers will need to have this training. This is just an example of the different statutes that have been created, and there's a lot more in this. And again, these are fantastic ideas for training that should be brought forth. It goes with a lot of diversity, mental health training, crisis and intervention training. And one of the things that I'm most excited about is mental health screening for officers. There was an article that was in the paper today about a program that was created here in Geneva by a company who is trying to create an, or who has created an app that really deals with mental health, physical health for people who are first responders, including state's attorney's employees. Again, this is the idea of keeping people in this system in a way that they are going to be productive, and they are not going to break down as a result of the high stress, high trauma that we see. But this is also going to come with who is providing this training. When is this training happening? When you take an officer off the streets, that means that there's somebody else that has to go in their place. That's going to affect the Sheriff's Department just as much as it's going to affect us. Now, we, the state's attorney's office, are going to try to be proactive and provide as much of this training as we can that will allow to be certified. But that also means that's an extra burden on us to be able to do that, which we will undertake, because we're in the best position to do so. The biggest one that's coming up January 1st of 2023 is the ending of cash bail, along with this idea of pre-trial release. Ending cash bail is the right way to go. I am not going to say otherwise, because I do know, having seen in our system that a person who commits a retail theft and has money gets out. A person who commits a retail theft and doesn't have any money stays in. That's not the way our system is supposed to be. So I am absolutely 100% on board with this. The issue that we have to look at is part of our judicial system is actually funded because of the fines and costs that are paid by people who go through the criminal justice system. And the reality is, most of those are paid because of the cash bail that has been posted. So if they post $1,000 and they end up owing $1,500 in fines and costs, $1,000 of that goes to pay it. And then we have to collect the other $500. It is a reality that this is how we have created our criminal justice system, that it's funded by the people who are the users of that system. And now we have to be cognizant of what that means when we don't have cash bail, and we don't have an automatic source where people are going to be paying fines and costs. So again, that's a big focus, and I know something that Circuit Clerk Barrero has really been focusing on in her meetings, because all of that goes through the clerk's office. In addition to that, because we're ending cash bail, we're going to this concept of pre-trial release. Pre-trial release requires us to have hearings for anybody that we want to be held, anybody that we believe should be released, but on certain conditions, and then people who on a scene that can just be released with conditions as well. This is going to take a significant amount of training. We have to rework all of the forms for everything, but we're going to have longer times than we currently do in our bond hearings. I'm sure that ASA Coyle can recount many a day that he's been in bond court, where we get a police report, or no, a synopsis, which is just a summary, a criminal history, and we have a hearing in about five minutes as to what the amount of cash bail should be, if any, or if it should be on recognizance. Now, we're going to be filing documents, a petition to hold somebody, where again, if there's something incorrect in that, a state's attorney could be charged with a class three felony because of what was incorrectly put in there, which means I can't put brand-new people into this. I have to put people who understand what they're doing, know how to fill out these forms, and know how to argue the case in the proper way. In addition to that, we're going to be required on some occasion, one minute, I'm very quick at this part. We're going to be required to, at some cases, make victims have to come in to testify. There is a House bill right now that says that it's going to require either a preliminary hearing or an indictment even prior to the pre-trial hearing. The pre-trial hearing is done within 72 hours. We don't have the capability to do preliminary hearings and indictments in that time period. So again, this is going to affect everybody within our court system. Rules to show cause versus warrants. If somebody fails to appear in court now, a warrant is issued. The way that the law is, is that if somebody fails to appear, we have to file a paperwork called a rule to show cause that has to be served on the person. And then if that person fails to appear, then we get a warrant. This is going to affect everyone in our system. Again, for a more detailed presentation, we're going to do this on the next JPS, so that we can all compile what that looks like for each of our individual departments. Thank you.
Very good, you did it, good. Well done. Are there any questions for Ms. Moser?
Sheprow?
Mr. Sheprow?
I guess I'm really disturbed by this notion of the class three felony. One, I don't know, why would anybody want to be an assistant state's attorney? That if somebody decides that your information wasn't accurate, you know, you're charged with a class three felony. And I guess my other question would be, if the clerk or the state's attorney or the sheriff says, "We need X amount in order to satisfy these record-keeping requirements." And if the county board doesn't give it to you, then are we guilty of a class three felony? I just find that to be a a very odd way of dealing with a record-keeping problem.
I don't disagree with you in regards to that. There is an intent portion of it that was written into the statute, so you're intending to do, to put false or misleading information. But then somebody has to defend themselves that they didn't intend to do it, versus it was an accident, versus we didn't have enough time to do it. So I, I know that we're still working on that portion of the legislation, and the hope is that we're going to have a trailer bill that cleans that up. But that is unfortunately the issue that we have to deal with.
Tepe question?
Yes, Mr. Tepe.
Ms. Moser, have you looked at the impact that this is going to have on your staff requirements and come up with any kind of estimate?
Yes, we have. So at a prior JPS, we actually did a presentation, and we estimated how many additional people we would need because of body cameras, because of the technology, because of what we have to bring forth, as well as the whole pre-trail division that has to deal with that. as well as the whole pre-trail division that has to deal with that. So the plan is that with the additional information that we've received to present an actual number at the next JPS meeting, so you'll know what it is that we are anticipating. That would include extra space too, because I don't have anywhere to put anyone.
And that's on March 10th?
And that's on March 10th, yes. And that will be a presentation by the judiciary, King County Diagnostic Center, the court services, the sheriff, security, everybody that's affected by this in public safety.
Okay, I'll be looking forward to March 10th.
Bates, please.
Ah, yes, Ms. Bates.
Um, Ms. Mosser, hi.
Hi.
Do you have to review the cam footage on every case, even if it's been dropped or plea bargained or something like that?
So if it's been dropped, it's probably dropped for a reason, but we would have reviewed something ahead of time for that. Ethically, we have to turn over everything, but we also have to disclose when there is an issue. It's called a Brady issue. So if there's something that shows that a person that goes to show that the person is not guilty of it, we have to disclose that. Now, if we just send over 18 hours of body cam footage and we just hope that there's nothing in there, we're not ethically doing our job. So yes, we do have to review this on our cases even prior to us issuing a, an offer for somebody to plead guilty to.
So has the every, every single case?
Yes.
Huh. What is LEAD?
Oh, LEAD is the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion. It's the program out of Seattle, Washington, that we have based our pre-arrest diversion program on.
Okay.
Program that would qualify under the deflection portion of the Safety Act.
Okay, and the bail gets returned, right, when they show up for court?
If they are found not guilty or the case is dismissed, all but 10% is released to them. If they plead guilty or they're found guilty and they are reassessed fines and costs, then that money for bond is applied to the fines and costs. Anything that's remaining then is returned to the individual.
So does this cost us money? The answer is yes, correct?
Then it's not necessarily costing us money. It was an easy way for us to recoup fines and costs because the money was there. What's that?
You have, we already had the money.
Yes, because we already have the money.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. That's all.
Question though.
That's all you have.
Believe me, this is way out of my area of expertise. My understanding is that rarely is anybody required to put up the full amount of the bail. They get a bond and only a portion is actually posted.
That's correct. Most of the time, if, let's say, for example, they're going to do a $10,000 bond, only 10% of that is traditionally applied, but that's decided by the judges. Some judges require a full cash bond. Some judges will only do the 10% portion. It just depends on the level of the crime.
And, and I'd like to coach our board members with questions that it relates directly to the special county sales tax rather than the process of what does that mean to look at what footage, how much footage? Because we, we, one time, and it's a fascinating topic, but many of those questions will be addressed at a later date as we drill down as you determine what two presentations you'd like to know more about opportunities.
Madam Chair, Sergeus?
Yes, Mr. Sergeus.
If I could just comment that I appreciate Ms. Mosser's ability to stand there with a smile on her face and be so positive in an environment where it seems like at every turn we've made her job and her entire team's job more and more difficult, and it's so very appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Sergeus.
That's very kind. Okay, so with that, how about if we bring up our next presentation? Thank you, State's Attorney Mosser. Well appreciated. Dr. Silva and Michael Isaacson are going to be speaking on mental health.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to address the board regarding a topic about which I feel very passionate. Mental health is a public health issue. You will hear Mr. Isaacson speak to you about the statistics, and they will be very pertinent to King County. Please keep in mind that these numbers are based on people who actually seek treatment or who have been kind enough to participate in surveys and other information gathering strategies. I'd love to leave you wondering. Is it possible that a large percentage of the population goes undiagnosed and undercounted? Is it probable that stigma, fear, lack of transportation, lack of internet access, lack of language fluency, et cetera, prevents many people from seeking help? Could there be other comorbidities or ailments that folks need to tend first to before devoting their time to mental health? Do people break their legs? Do people have diabetes? Do people have heart conditions along with mental health issues? Also, how long do you think the current wait times are right now to see a mental health practitioner? In my family, it took two months. Secondly, let's remember that some of our communities hold social mores or cultural norms which could further complicate mental health access. This is why representation clearly matters. Lastly, I'd like to leave you with the fact that mental health issue can manifest as racing thoughts, you can't stop thinking, stress, nervousness, fear, inability to concentrate or sleep, ADD, ADHD, irritability. Nobody here could be irritable at home, right? Shortness of breath, mental fog, and so many other things. Thank you. Mr. Isaacson?
Thank you, Dr. Silva, for your kind words about the issues that are facing so many of our residents. And also, thank you, Dr. Silva, shared a video with me, and I'm just going to show a couple of screenshots here because I think it does a nice job of illustrating how widespread mental health issues are in our community. And this is from a psychologist in Great Britain, and she used rice. And the rice demonstrates all of the people in our community. And you can see that the brown rice represents the people who are not significantly impacted personally with a mental health condition, but the wild rice represents somebody who, in a given year, is themselves experiencing a mental health condition. And you can see when we look at the percentages here, it's about a quarter of people who at some point in our lifetime will experience a mental health problem. And as you mix the rice up, one in four people, that's a lot of people in our community. And I, we both thought it was pretty telling. When she breaks this in, she just grabs a handful and puts it into these different circles to say, okay, here's who's in your family. Here's maybe in your, your network of friends. Here's people that you may work with. And you can see that most likely, even if you yourself are not struggling with a mental health issue, that the chances are extremely high that somebody that you're around is struggling with a mental health issue at any given time. So I think especially right now where we have so much divisiveness in, in our community, which actually can exacerbate people's mental health states. We have fewer support systems that we typically could lean on. So we're seeing somebody who maybe would still be suffering, but now the, the acuity of their mental health issue may raise where it becomes problematic, where they may be more likely to be hospitalized. They may be more likely to have engagement with law enforcement. So looking at some national statistics, in a given year, one in five adults may experience a mental health issue. One in 20, so 5% of, of people may experience a serious mental illness, and that's usually defined as, as something that's really impacting their ability to function. And you can see the, the map of the United States in the lower left-hand corner. It gives you an example of some of the most common things that people are struggling with. In the, the lower right of the blue box, you can see a breakdown in this is prevalence in any, any given 12 months. 21% of all adults may struggle with a mental health issue. We do have a lot of disparities, and we do have a lot of issues in our community with access to healthcare. As Dr. Silva mentioned, people have to wait a significant amount of time to get into care. If somebody needs Spanish language therapy, for example, that may be an even longer wait. So we have some really equity-focused issues that we need to keep in mind. But also, this points out to me, as you look at, at the number of white adults, 22%. So more than average, white adults are struggling. This isn't just in our, our more urban communities. This is something that impacts everybody. It's not limited to income. No matter how much money, even if somebody is fully insured, this can be having a significant impact on their mental health. Just looking at the numbers based on the, the national averages, you can see in King County, around 80,000 residents may experience difficulty with mental illness in a given year, and up to 20,000 residents may experience serious mental illness. That's, that's a lot of people living in our community. And what we're hearing, not only from our providers, but also from our schools, is that we're seeing it in younger and younger kids and more serious issues sooner in their lives, which is really alarming. So a couple of more specific statistics, I, I shared a couple of weeks ago when we were talking about the ARPA funding, that we identified mental health as the number one priority in the community. We surveyed over 1,500 residents, and 45% of them identified it as the number one issue. Another 24% indicated that alcohol and other drugs were the number one issue. 12% of those residents that we surveyed indicated that they were struggling to access mental health services right now. So what happens because of this? Well, we're seeing in King County that we have more than one overdose every single day. You can see last year, we had over 400 overdoses show up in our hospitals here in King County. So that is, is pretty staggering. 90 residents died from an overdose, and the average age is 40. So again, this is not just young people. This is, is not just the older population. This is impacting people across a wide range of ages. Unfortunately, we're losing a resident. This is an attempted suicide. We're losing a resident about every eight and a half days in our community. So in 2020, we had 42 deaths. We were working with the coroner's office now, and it takes a while to, to analyze and make sure that everything is, is coded the correct way. So we should have the 2021 data soon, but unfortunately, it's not looking much better. And as we look at national surveys, we see that suicidal ideation or people thinking about and planning to commit suicide has been on the rise nationally, and that continues to go up. So as I talked about before, COVID has made this much, much worse. We're seeing increased reports of anxiety and depression. We're seeing increased suicide among young people. People have been socially isolated. We're experiencing longer wait times for a variety of reasons. I just cut and paste a couple of recent studies that have come out. So American Academy of Pediatrics declared a national emergency for child and adolescent mental health. There was a study that just came out a couple of days ago where pediatric emergency department visits associated with mental health conditions have risen dramatically because of the pandemic or during the pandemic, and we're, we're attributing it to the, the many issues with the pandemic and the mental health impacts. Many of us talk about just how short our fuses are now and, and how frustrated people can be. If somebody's struggling with a mental health issue, that's just even worse. So what are the opportunities here that we can do? As was mentioned, this particular opportunity would, would create a board that would make funding decisions or recommendations to the board for how funding could be used. At the Health Department, we do provide a forum where we bring together people through a behavioral health council. We have an opioid task force, and we also work very closely with the other existing efforts that, that are going on in our community, whether it's with the sheriff, the state's attorney, different groups where there's exciting things that are, that are happening. So there's a lot of guidance that can be provided in terms of where the needs are. I have on the screen the top four needs that we've identified. So workforce development initiative, and I'm, again, so thankful to the board to take action and provide some initial ARPA funding so that we can meet this immediate need for our community. There's a lot of opportunity moving forward for us to work more closely with the colleges, set up programs where we can make sure that we have people from our community who get into the workforce and stay in the workforce so that they can best serve people that they grew up around. So people who are from our community that can help others. There's also a lot of opportunities for us to really become a, a center where we can recruit people in the Chicagoland area to get them to come out and, and work here. We have a lot of training that needs to occur, whether we're talking about diversity and working with different types of clients, whether it's different types of treatments. I mentioned how we're seeing issues with younger and younger patients. That's something new for a lot of therapists, so there's a lot more training that we want to provide to make sure that when a family brings their five-year-old in or their four-year-old in, that we have somebody who's really skilled at play therapy in some of these different modalities. Second is having a mechanism where we can support unfunded or underfunded needs. That's something that we hear about a lot, that families may get in and they may be able to get therapy, but there's a lot of other things going on in their life that are directly impacting their mental health that if we set up a program like this and we have different models that we've done in King County before around access to healthcare that we could replicate. Third, supporting coordination of crisis services. There's some changes on the horizon, and this is something that our community providers have voiced that they would like to get more engaged with the county around. And this is going to take a lot of resources to make sure that if, if people are calling for a crisis, that we can get them the immediate care they need, get people into hospital beds if we need hospital beds. And finally, engaging the community in a unified communication framework. So having a plan, I see it as a lot of really good things going on in the community, and we can really tie them together, and that takes some additional resources to be able to do that. So with that, I will bring it to an end. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are, are there any questions for Dr. Silva or for Mr. Isaacson? You're all paused. Crisis is critical. Okay, hearing no questions? It was a very clear presentation. Tom? And I think Drew is on vacation or is he traveling?
He's traveling, yes. Carl Shadals with, here with me as well. Tom Rickert with the Division of Transportation. And I'm going to skip the next slide, which is just kind of an overview of the occupation tax. And I'm going to skip this. The state's attorney's office handled these bullet points really well. And then just get into if the opportunity arises for transportation. The law is pretty clear that for transportation purposes, that there's certain things that need to occur. And, and one of them is, is that we need to publish notice for the existence of a long-range transportation plan. That plan is in place already. And by law, we're required to do a long-range transportation plan as well as a five-year financial plan, which we call our Transportation Improvement Program. For the purposes of the paragraph above, transportation purposes is construction, maintenance, operation, improvement of public highways, any other purpose for which the county may expend funds under the Illinois Highway Code. Essentially, anything and everything that we currently do, we're able to expend these funds on. Hitting real quickly, our transportation long-range planning efforts are multimodal. We have our long-range transportation plan, which is out to the year 2050, as well as we have our long-range transit plan and our bicycle pedestrian plan. Our goal is to achieve safety, personal mobility, cooperative planning, quality of environment, and system efficiency. When we look at planning, we're required to look at modeling the demographic changes that are anticipated for the future. Looking at these charts in front of you, we anticipate from our 2020 census number of 516,522 individuals, we anticipate a 51% growth in population, a 64% growth in households, and 10% growth in employment. These, these numbers match up with CMAP data and census data, and we utilize this for modeling purposes. It gives us an opportunity to see how growth changes. When I first arrived in King County, we had about 300,000 people in the county, and now we're up around 520,000. We anticipate from the number you see there in 2050 that the population will be 700,000. We anticipate from the number you see there in two thousand and fifty that the population will be seven hundred and eighty-one thousand. Growth-wise, we're looking at over two hundred and fifty thousand population over the next three decades, as well as households, we're looking at about a hundred and sixteen thousand household, new households within the county. These changing demographics, they equal transportation needs. We will see that across the county without certain highway improvements, transit improvements, and bike pad improvements, that we're going to have significant decline in the system performance that's out there, as well as there's a lot of elements in transit and bicycle pad that don't exist right now that really need to be addressed as we go into the future. When you look at the third bullet point down, you'll see that vehicle miles traveled will increase seventy-nine percent. I mean, essentially, you're looking at the amount of vehicles on our current highway system doubling. The vehicle hours travel will more than double, and the vehicle hours of delay will increase by more than four times. I know that when I first started working for the county, it took probably twenty-five minutes to get from my house to the office. Now it takes around forty minutes, and that will continue to increase. Moving on, the plan, the long-range plan was adopted by the county board on May eleventh in two thousand and twenty-one. Because of the lack of revenues, our focus is on maintaining the existing system, safety improvements, and capacity enhancements on Randall, Fabian, Kirk, and Orchard. We also have various intersection and capacity improvements that we do countywide. You look at the map in the middle, everything in orange, pink, and red illustrates anywhere from ten thousand to twenty-plus thousand additional vehicles on those roads. And the result was certain improvements. The map on the right shows the various capacity improvements and intersection and safety improvements needed to address the growth of trips on our transportation system. When we look at the transportation system as a whole, we received three thousand four hundred public comments in our comment process with the public. That was a three-year process. We came up with one point zero two three billion dollars worth of estimated improvements. These are primarily highway improvements, as I mentioned earlier. The bicycle pedestrian transit needs to be increased as well. We are in the process of updating our bicycle plan, and we will bicycle pedestrian plan, sorry. And we will be developing some of the project cost estimates for that in the future. Our focus on transit is riding cane and developing transit corridors through appropriate land use planning. Moving on, if you look at our long-range transportation plan, which is online, you'll see a list of probably almost seventy projects that are county highway projects that are within there. The primary projects in the long-range plan are three interchanges. You see them listed there, corridor and intersection improvements on some of our major arterials, as well as some multimodal projects and safety enhancements for ADA and bicycle and pedestrian improvements, and then also the transit and riding cane improvements. And then as far as the cost to remedy these current needs as well as two thousand and fifty needs, out of that one point zero two three billion in capital projects, we have a five-year Transportation Improvement Program, our five-year financial plan that shows a fiscally constrained program of two hundred and one million. That means we actually have monies in order to proceed forward with two hundred and one million dollars worth of projects. And then that same tip, the five-year plan has a hundred and ninety million capital shortfall for projects currently under development, which means that we're engineering as well as acquiring land right away in order to move forward with those projects. So in total, there's an eight hundred and twenty-two million dollar capital funding need to address the two thousand and fifty numbers that have been adopted by the county board. Just to give you a look at revenues and expenditures on an annual basis, the primary revenues are listed there, and we have about forty-five point six million dollars in estimated revenue on an annual basis. For the primary expenditures, we also show the forty-five point six million dollars in expenditures. Of that, the available for capital projects is approximately eight to nine million dollars that we have on an annual basis. That's not a whole lot when you look at an intersection typically is anywhere from five to ten million dollars in costs. We're moving forward with the number of intersections right now that need safety enhancement improvements. And one of them we're working on is nine point eight million dollars. We have had intersections over twenty million dollars just to address capacity and safety needs. So we can in general maybe do one or two intersection projects a year with this type of funding. So what's the benefit of quarter percent sales tax for transportation? The benefit is at a quarter percent sales tax, that's the thirteen million annually that Madam Chair mentioned earlier. Expected revenue then over twenty-seven years, as well as with some growth, is four hundred and eighty-one million dollars. At nine million dollars a year, current capital spending until FY two thousand and fifty, there's around two hundred and twenty-five million that we would anticipate, as well as we anticipate various federal and state funds coming in of around two to two and a half million dollars a year. With the sales tax, there is the potential bonding to address immediate needs. But again, with the four hundred and eighty-one million, the two hundred and twenty-five million, the fifty million in federal funds, we get pretty close to addressing the needs for two thousand and fifty. It doesn't fully address it, but we get close. So what's the sustained value for the Kane County residents? Improvements to the county transportation system will increase opportunity, improve daily lives of residents, that travel times reduced because of that, opportunity to improve business climate, increase of alternative modes, transit and bike pad, fewer traffic bottlenecks, improve safety and capacity, and improve traffic flow and signal synchronizations. And that's all I have for you.
Ten minutes per, was it twelve? Good job. Ten minutes. Are there any questions?
Question, Alan?
Yes, Ms. Allen?
Can these presentations be put someplace where we can see them? Tom, there's so much information here, and it's all really valuable. I'd like to be able to see it again.
I believe so, absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Yes, we can post those on the website for everybody. So you'll be able to study them. Anything else? Okay, we have one more. And I'd like to bring up Marcus and Chris. Thank you, Tom and Carl. Well done. And Roger. Okay, so Chris, do you want to introduce everybody?
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. I apologize for not being there. My previous commitment to work has called me out for the last ten days, which made it kind of inappropriate or made it difficult for me to prepare for this adequately. But I think that since I've become the, been on the board, I think that all of the, I think all of my fellow board members have seen and experienced the same thing that I have, isn't that the infrastructure is in in need of modernizing. We were able to take care of the most egregious of those facilities situations, which was the coroner's office. So we have a new coroner's office, but we are experiencing a considerable shortcoming in the maintenance and the maintenance of our buildings over time as they deteriorate. And I would like to, because I am out of town, just turn it over to Roger Fonstock and Marcus Smith, Rogers, our IT Director. And Marcus is in charge of capital expenditure, capital improvements. Go ahead, gentlemen.
Okay. So good evening. This is Roger Fonstock from the IT Department. I'm going to just start by saying that we were asked to talk about capital construction and also about the deferred maintenance that the county often hears about. So under the ordinance or the statute that's out there for this tax, it defines construction of public facilities, renovation, maintenance. I mean, it pretty much covers almost anything that you would want to do to a capital facility or real property to make improvements to it or to enhance it or to build new. So with that said, we were looking at, you know, kind of where the building management and facilities are at currently. And we've been reviewing the existing buildings that's in progress in the committee. We do have White and Company that has been brought on by the county board to do the studies and working with that. So they're doing an inventory of the existing buildings. There's looking at the current and future utilization and the space needs. The assessment of the maintenance and condition of the buildings is being done. There's also another process for master planning for the facilities, which involves how do we use the buildings, what programs and services do we offer? Are they meeting our needs? Do we need more space? Do we need different types of space? How do we serve the public? You know, any number of accessibility issues. And then there's, you know, the reinvestment in our existing buildings. We're looking at, you know, what types of improvements need to be made or also the deferred maintenance for taking care of the mechanical systems and other systems. So Mark will talk a little bit about that in a minute. Then the last piece is capital construction for new facilities. And that's really kind of the vision of the county. Where do you want to be over the next five, ten, twenty years or so? How do you see the county evolving, growing, the buildings that we're in right now versus the buildings that we would be in in the near future? So when we look at this, this is kind of the way we handle a lot of things in terms of technology, but also with buildings. We look at maintaining what we own, maintain the existing facilities, take care of what you own. The second part is, you know, what can you do to expand and improve on the existing facilities? There might be things that we can do a little bit differently and take better use of our properties, make some specific improvements. And then the last piece is kind of what happened with the multipurpose building is we need a new facility because we cannot maintain or expand or improve it to the point where we can make it viable for the people that have to provide services. So those are the things that we typically look at in administration. So getting into this, this is kind of the portion of maintaining existing, which is not the new construction. I'm going to have Mark speak about that because he's been digging into the maintenance of the facilities and the deferred maintenance and kind of where we're at with that.
Thank you, Roger. I'm Mark Smith. I'm the Director of Capital Projects with Building Management. So when we're talking about maintaining existing facilities, we define deferred management or maintenance as repairs to facilities that get delayed in backlog because of budget limitations and the lack of funding and resources. Sometimes we just have to re-prioritize. Excuse me, re-prioritize. Reinvestment in facilities is scheduled investments that maintain facilities or assets, capital renewal, routine maintenance of service requests, heating and air conditioning, electrical, plumbing, water systems, the shell of the building, which includes the roof windows and exterior, landscape, roads, and grounds, safety and security systems, which is cameras, access control, locks, those kinds of things. And then transportation and accessibility. Common issues include heating and cooling, HVAC repair, replacement, and controls. Big challenges over on the Judicial Center campus as we currently speak. Accessibility and ADA upgrades, restroom facilities and upgrades, elevator upgrades, plumbing upgrades, electrical upgrades, asbestos remediation, foundation and structural, roof repairs and replacements, aging paint, tile, carpet, and finishes, parking surfaces and sidewalks, demolition and removal of old structures. The next slide here shows some of the challenges that we have in front of us. The couple of the issues that you see to the left there, those four boxes are this building that you're in. The top left one is one, it's near and dear to my heart. That's a restroom here in this building. While it is not ADA, it does have the amenity of the tub table in it from still when it was.
New York apartment.
So, yeah. So the next thing, a couple of other things that we have there in this building is we are starting to see some collapsing of the road behind us. It's not immediately in need, but we do have a structural engineer taking a look at it as we speak. To the right there, you'll see a couple of things. The top left corner there, that's at what is referred to as the Pizza Hut building over on Fabian. I'll talk about Fabian here in just a second with some more things. The Yellow House itself probably needs a hundred thousand dollars with renovations as we speak. There's the three pictures at the bottom there. Those are storage issues. We have a major storage issue here in the county. Those particular pictures are currently in the jail. We need that space for future projects for the Sheriff's Department. But right now, we are holding supplies for the Health Department there. And another issue that we have before us is the eight-hundred-pound gorilla known as Fabian Parkway. We have the Pizza Hut building and building in the bottom middle there. Both are scheduled for demolition. Then the top center is the old coroner's office behind us, again, scheduled for demolition. Then we have also an environmental challenge, the bottom left there at Fabian, which is the gas tanks underneath the ground. And last but not least, the big picture on the bottom left there, that is the impound lot at the old sheriff's area. So deferred maintenance. In two thousand and fifteen, we had an assessment similar to what we're going through right now. In seven years, a lot of things have changed. Kane County owns twenty-seven buildings, some of which date back to the mid eighteen hundreds that need eighteen million dollars worth of maintenance work, according to that assessment done in two thousand and fifteen. The assessment took about a year and looked at physical deficiencies, equipment, heating and cooling systems, handicap accessibility. Adrian Bennett, according to Clark and Associates, is where that quote comes from. Assessments currently are being updated by White and Company, and we anticipate similar or greater amount of deferred maintenance when that report comes out for our master plan.
So, you know, having been here through the deferred maintenance in the two thousand and fifteen study, I was looking at where we have been over the last, you know, five to seven years and talking with Marcus about that. And, you know, while you try to invest two million dollars a year in repairing and fixing deferred maintenance, you have the ongoing maintenance that's either falling behind or you're barely able to keep up with as well. So we're not sure exactly where we'll end up with the assessment, but I do anticipate that it will be similar to where we were five to seven years ago. So getting back to, you know, if you are looking at improving the current facilities or doing the deferred maintenance, when do you get to the point where you want to expand or build? So you can improve to a certain extent. You can potentially add to existing facilities, which we are doing now. I know at the Juvenile Justice Center, they're adding a courtroom. We have done some maneuvering in the north campus or the Randall Road Branch Court, where we've added the Diagnostic Center. We've managed to add a courtroom over there for traffic over the years. The last facilities master plan was done in two thousand and fourteen. I think some of the people here may remember that, but that, you know, master plan approached fifty, sixty, seventy million dollars. It started building momentum and then realizing, you know, how would you pay for this type of an improvement? Or how would you pay for these types of structures? And I think that's where the plan kind of becomes shelfware. It sits on a shelf because it just, you know, will to go out and finance that kind of structure takes significant commitment. So we're going to be doing the, you know, building assessment and utilization and study report. It's critical. There's the deferred maintenance and condition reports that are going to be critical to this decision-making process. You also have the coordination of the offices and departments. They need to be worked with to understand their program needs, office needs, and staffing. There's going to be some short-term and long-term planning. And then ultimately, the financial planning, which is And then ultimately the financial planning, which is where this sales tax would come in. I think it's important to look at the buildings. These are just six of the buildings that have been talked about over the years. Government Center Campus here being rebuilt, potentially at the Judicial Center Campus Warehouse and Storage, fifty thousand square feet of storage would probably be a good start. The Health Department in Aurora, Aurora and Elgin Satellite Offices. There's been a lot of talk about having offices in both locations that are substantial offices for the county to deliver services. We have some offices there now. They're rental spaces. Any of the Judicial Center Campus, there's been talk of the Circuit Clerk and expansion of the Attorney's Offices and Courts, other programs. And then there's also, you know, a lot of flat parking space, but as you put more buildings on the Judicial Center Campus, you're probably looking at a parking structure. So in total, you know, deferred maintenance, if we're at two thousand and fifteen, we are at eighteen million and we haven't made significant progress, we're probably at eighteen million. Need to, you know, complete the facility assessment, need to plan for the deferred maintenance, look at the costs and, and also work on schedule because this, this takes time. Then the, the last piece is new facilities. That's really the vision that the county has for the next five, ten, twenty years or greater. Are you looking at, you know, investing in a couple of new buildings to meet certain specific needs? Are you looking at the full facility plan that will be part of the master facility plan? So with that, I think that wraps up what we have for, you know, the, the buildings, capital construction, new buildings, deferred maintenance. So with that, any questions?
Okay, very good.
Christian Allen.
Yes, Ms. Allen.
Actually, this is both for Marcus and Roger and also for Tom Ricker. Some of us are working remotely. And I'm wondering if that is a good plan and we would want to continue it. And if that's the case, then if we build or move things around, do we take that into consideration? And would CMAP be able to help us with that? Can we look at our own staff and departments and, and come to, come to conclusions? I just think it's interesting that we have been forced into working remotely, but in many ways it's been a very successful transition. Maybe not for county board members so much, sorry about that. But a lot of our staff has been working remotely and I think that has been, it, it has worked well. So can someone address how that figures into our?
So this is Roger from IT. I, I would personally describe most of our county employees as superheroes. They basically work from wherever they need to, from their offices, from, you know, their remote offices. It's been, you know, absolutely incredible to watch our workforce adapt and get things done while all of this is going on. So I don't see that going away. And I think it's an asset to have that flexibility, to have that technology and, and the people that can actually exercise it, the talent that you have to have in order to do that. Not everybody can just work from home. It, it takes special people to be able to get the work done while they're at home. So I don't see that going away. And in fact, I think many of the things that we, we have adopted will, will stay in place and continue. But it does require us to invest in buildings a little differently. And I think the judiciary has been going through their own master planning process for how they want to deal with programs and services. And I think that's, that's going to impact the types of buildings that you have to have. I don't know if that means less or more. It's probably a mix, but we won't know until we get further into the studies.
Roger, just a follow-up. Thank you for making all of that possible without the unbelievable expertise and stick-to-itiveness of our Information Technologies Department. None of this would have been possible. You're the superhero here. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
So, next steps, be mindful of time. At soon to be scheduled future board meeting, we're going to analyze these four presentations. And from that, I'd like the board to carefully consider all four and to consider moving forward with two. And with the approval of the board, I'd like to either conduct a quantitative voter research study to put out the two. If you would like voters to fund one or the other, give them an option to get their input from the electorate. Or, as I was talking to Mr. Sheprow earlier today, to do a non-binding resolution on the primary ballot, which would also perhaps give us an indication of what interest the voters who show up to vote on the primary may have an interest in voting upon. Pending upon the outcome of this research, the board then can decide to put the proposition on the November twenty twenty ballot within the seventy nine days or seventy eight days. So we'll have to do that count backwards to make sure that we're there for the time. So these are our opportunities and as well as our problems. I think all of our problems have been fully laid out from mental health to the issue that legislation is going to impact our judicial public safety campus and the, and the staff there and their efforts to buildings that are in need of repair to future transportation needs, which are critical to the growth and well-being of the county. So, Mr. Itball, to go back to your original question, why are we talking about this? This is why. These are four opportunities that the voters can decide if they would like to support any of these efforts.
Madam Chair, Serge.
Yes, Mr. Serge.
I, I, this is just me personally, but I would so enjoy keeping these at a committee of the whole for discussion rather than doing this during a board meeting. My personal feelings is that the board meeting is, is meant to just facilitate those items that are up for a vote that have already come, come through committee. And I don't believe that we're quite ready to bring this to a vote yet. But I do see the need for having lots of discussion on this and another call, if that's at all possible.
That, that's ideal. That's a great suggestion because yes, there has to be discussion before it can get to a resolution.
Madam Chair, just one other thing. Are there any limitations? I'm assuming that if these were going out to referendum or going out to the voters, that, that, you know, you just don't slap it on a, you know, piece of literature. You know, there, we, we would have some educational process going on. Do we have limitations on how that, I mean, just so we're noodling this ourselves? You know, do we have, like, we can't spend money to promote this or we can't or, you know, how, how, how do we do that?
We can, and Assistant State's Attorney, he's gone, State's Attorney now will be able to assist with all of this. But it's my understanding that we may not use public money to influence. But we can educate, which means we can do very much as the kind of presentation that was presented today. Here's the data, here are the facts, and lay it on the table in, in complete honesty and frankness.
Sheprow comments?
Yes, Mr. Sheprow.
Ken, one, one second, Serge. Can I just finish one final thing?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
I, I really would need a little bit of a summary synopsis to say, if I'm understanding this right, we can do four separate increments for certain amounts of money that can or can be ongoing or extinguished later on. Or we can do them for a term of time that has a sunset clause. I'm, it was, this was just a, a whole ton of information that I know I'm going to be making phone calls afterwards to say, okay, now I didn't get that, but I did get this. Is there like an executive summary that we'll get to just help us along with that cheat sheet?
We can prepare that for you.
You're the best.
Each one, each one is subtle, subtly different. Each one is subtly different.
And boy, you had, you had the whole rock star brigade there today. Michael Isaacson, Tom Ricker, I mean, this, what a fabulous group of employees. I thank you so much.
Comment.
Second to that.
Mr. Sheprow, you had a comment?
No. Yes, one, I think the, the law says that a public body may not use public funds or public resources to either oppose or support any public question, which would cover the referendum. It may, however, engage in educational activities. And those educational activities based on past practice can include informing the public as to what the consequences of either passing or defeating the referendum would be. You know, the classic example is the school district that will say, if you don't pass this, we're going to cut the football team. That may not be a good political tactic, but that, you can say that, but you cannot say vote yes or vote no. Now, to the other point, my understanding, which is why I asked the questions at the beginning, my understanding, Cliff, is that we must decide which of those specific categories will be listed in the referendum question. We can only pick one at an election. We can't say all of them or we can't even have like four referenda at the same time. These were the different category. If you.
How do you understand that, Ken? Thank you.
Yeah, that's, to me, that was very important because if we don't pick, you know, we have to agree on what it is we want to submit and then wait till the next election or a future election to add another category.
That's correct.
If you pick mental health, one, as Vince explained, that would mean you'd have to establish the seven oh eight board and it also would mean that.
No, no, I, Mr. Sheprow, it is not a seven oh eight board. It's a mental health board.
Okay, it's, all right. I, I think that might be a distinction without a difference. But in any case, you can't then use it for fighting crime, arguably. Although I think we also discussed that some of those categories are broad enough that they could encompass some of the other categories. But we're only allowed to submit one specific referendum question. We can't list all of those things in one question and we can't do it. We have to do one referendum at a time in an election.
Correct. Dr. Silva.
Madam Chair, thank you. I would just like to remind the board that I believe that it is by statute that we already function as the Board of Health. So we have just not been diligent about meeting. I believe we actually have to meet once a year. But if, if we were to go that route, it is already in place possibly with a smaller committee. I don't know how it happens, but we do need, we, we do already function as a Board of Health.
So we can talk about how that could be processed appropriately and we can do that at the next meeting as we drill down. And if you'd like, we can have several of those two. So we could talk about two for an hour, two for another meeting and another hour and then come back. Because a decision has to be made and we can't labor this for months and months upon simply because of timing. We do, we are on a deadline if we're going to be doing it this year.
Madam Chair, Serge again?
Yes, Mr. Serge.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out in my head how, how to, I mean, welcome to Shark Tank, here's our presentation. But which one of them is the most important? And I, I'm, I'm real, I'm just being candid. I'm really confused on how to make that. If we can only do one, I don't know how to judge that. And I, and I really love input from other people, so.
You'll have twenty four other judges on the Shark Tank to make that decision.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? Okay, excellent presentation, all. This was, I hope, as beneficial to you as it was interesting to me to hear our needs. And with that.
My Ken and I'd like to move that we adjourn and start thinking about this.
Second. Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Sanchez or Mr. Ford, both. Mr. Sanchez has it.